I know, holy macaroni. Ready? Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. It's a Tuesday, so it's a change of pace, but we have a full house save for Alderman Cummings, who indicated at the last minute he wasn't able to make it. I believe he's out of town. I would kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call for this special committee of the whole meeting.
Chuck Brown.
Here.
Mike Bruno.
Here.
Don Cummings.
Dorothy Flanagan.
Here.
Dean Kilburg.
Here.
Craig Malardra.
Here.
Richard Marks.
Here.
Mary Sino.
Here.
Tom Simoniyan.
Here.
Ron Singer.
Here.
Great. Item two is consent agenda, motion to approve. So consent?
Excuse me.
Alderman Br-- yes. Alderman Flanagan?
When do I make an amendment to that, or when do I make a correction?
Oh, you can do so now.
To the minutes?
Certainly.
The second set of minutes on February 4th shows me as being present. I was not present. I did come there, but I didn't stay for the meeting nor was I part of it. So if you can stricken that from the record and just put me as absent, I would appreciate it.
You've got a doppelganger out there. You got it. With those slight amendments, Mr. Brown, do you wish to approve? So is there a second? Alderman Bruno?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kilburg.
Oh, forgive me, Alderman Kilburg. All in favor, say aye.
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 Great. We jump down to item four, items of business. 4A is to consider resolution number 2015-09 for authorization to proceed. Illinois Route 31 road diet feasibility study, submittal to the Illinois Department of Transportation, District 1.
So moved.
Second.
Marks makes the motion and Simoniyan makes the second. This matter is on the floor for discussion. We will begin with some brief remarks from our Director of Public Works, Mr. Babica. Mr. Babica, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The item you have before you tonight has been a long traveled road. Started back last summer, actually last spring, and culminated in November, council meeting when we executed a contract with SEMCON Consulting to conduct a modified Phase 1 for a potential road diet on Illinois Route 31 between basically Third Street and Fabian Parkway. Over the last several months, staff and SEMCON, as well as Brent Coulter from Coulter Transportation Limited, I'm sorry, LLC, has been working through the road diet concept. There's been two open house meetings conducted at Public Works back in January and February, and the information has been compiled into a fairly comprehensive Phase 1 report that's been included in tonight's packet. In brief, over during the course of this study, the road diet answered several important questions. First off, would the road diet, with the restriction of Route 31 from a four lane cross section to a two lane cross section, be supported with traffic counts? And utilizing information provided by Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, CMAP for short, that information did support projections through 2040 that the four lane road section, cross section could be reduced to two lanes and still accommodate the projected traffic counts through 2040. The next item that was looked at, the staff and consultants were looked at, was the installation of a bike path on the roadway sharing in the lanes of traffic. What we found specifically between Easton and Forest View is that Route 31 narrows and sections up to 35 feet wide. And with the standard minimum width for IDOT at 10-foot travel lanes, there simply was not enough width within the current roadway segment to support two on-street bike lanes of a minimum four-foot lengths. Therefore, the road diet does not support the installation of bike lanes through this road segment. The next item that we looked at and investigated was the potential for safety improvements. And what we found, actually what the consultants found through analysis of the accident data, is that this segment of Route 31 has a very extremely high likelihood of side swipe motorist accidents. It's actually three times the state average, and there's actually one segment of side swipes in opposite lanes of traffic, so it would be oncoming side swipes, where a motorist has nine times the state average of being a type of an accident on this segment of Route 31. So the reconfiguration from four lanes to two through lanes would support the concept, at least of safety improvements through this road segment. The last two items basically looked at how we would configure traffic into and out of the road diet. There are two options that were reviewed specifically at Third Street, and that's kind of the generic modification. Basically, the Third Street intersection includes everything from Elizabeth up to the Union Pacific Metro via Duck. And what we found looking through there is that there is going to be additional striping of pavement markings that would be required to funnel every, funnel the drivers into and out of the road diet cross-section, as well as a potential for potential traffic signal modifications, as well as supplemental warning signs and placards and possibly even flashing beacons that may be required by IDOT due to line of sight restrictions as southbound traffic especially crosses underneath the Viaduct and has to make that southeast turn or southwest turn towards Third Street. There's a potential that stacking could occur at that traffic signal or queuing of vehicles as they're waiting to get through that traffic intersection due to the one-lane restriction. However, there still is enough time for the typical motorist in typical conditions, which is what the report supports, to make that safe turn as well as stopping movement and even in times of extensive backing up of traffic. However, it's important to note that this entire segment of the road project is outside the project limits of IDOT for the resurfacing. IDOT's resurfacing project begins at Elizabeth and ends at Fabian Parkway. So any of the modifications that IDOT would require to happen from Elizabeth Street North would have to be funded somehow, some way. We're not saying that IDOT wouldn't fund those, but we're not saying they're going to fund them either. That is a potential that the city council has to be aware of. The next segment that we looked at was how to bring people in and out of the road diet at the Fabian Parkway. The road diet did not look at the intersection of Fabian and 31 primarily because the Campana Building, which is the southernmost property prior to Fabian Parkway, is actually in the city of Batavia. So our project ended basically at the property line at the Campana Building, the north property line. This is actually where the public comment over the last two meetings, as well as the online comments, came in very useful, that we realized through interviewing some of these, the motorists through that area, that we needed to provide additional stacking and queuing for southbound traffic as they entered, they crossed over Fabian heading south. So the, basically the taper has been pushed further to the north. So it's roughly at about the 1950 address, which will actually address some of the business parks concerns there, but it still allows for enough adequate stacking of traffic to go southbound through Fabian. Now, we did identify some potential improvements at intersections such as adding a dedicated westbound turn bay onto Fabian for southbound traffic, but again, that is outside the city's scope. That would have to be something that would be brought up by the city of Batavia and/or KDOT and/or IDOT. By pushing the, we felt that by bringing the taper as far north to the 1950 building as possible, that would still allow for adequate storage for the left turn movements in and out of Fabian Woods, as well as other cross streets that may want to turn in and out of businesses further to the north. So in short, that is the, that is what the results were of the phase, modified Phase 1. One outstanding question that can only be answered by IDOT is if we restrict, move forward and actually restrict, the segment from four lanes down to two through lanes with a common turn bay, what happens 15, 20 years, five years down the road? If the city says, well, this isn't working out, we want to go back to four lanes, what would that process entail? That unfortunately, excuse me, can only be answered by IDOT. Can it be answered by the study, by the consultants, or myself? That is the report in brief. We do have the large placards here that we can set up if we need to answer specific questions. Brent Coulter from Coulter Transportation LLC is here to answer any questions. Randy Buss from SEMCON could not make it, he is on a family vacation.
Mr. Coulter, is there anything else you'd like to add that has not yet been discussed at both the open houses? If so, I'd invite you to join us on the podium, otherwise you can wait to hear comments and perhaps address them as they arise. Okay. From the dais, Alderman Flanagan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Simoniyan then.
If I may, there are three items that I, that you discussed that could possibly be additional cost. Do you have any estimate on that for the city? The city cost to modify, I mean, put those signage up, flashing yellow warning light? And then there was a, there was a discussion about pedestrian structure at the Viaduct and third rail, and do you have any insight on that?
The, we will, staff will be submitting a proposal for the pedestrian crossing over Route 31 during the upcoming budget process.
Okay.
Of initiating that. That is, we actually have a meeting coming up in March with the Union Pacific and Metro, where we're going to be looking at some feasibility and practicality. At Phase, the Phase 1 study for that is estimated at about $120,000 with construction costs well in excess of $2.5 million.
But that's independent of the road diet.
That's completely independent of the road diet. I just wanted to.
And that would happen whether this was going to happen or not? Is that correct?
Correct. That has been a long-term vision of the city council, going back at least to April of 2014, as best as I can tell.
And what is.
For me, that's a long-term, I've only been here five months. That's history.
And what is the flashing, the flashing yellows and all that additional signage? What's the cost of that? Do you have a rough guesstimate on that?
The additional pavement markings, we're estimating would probably be an additional $5,000 to $6,000.
Okay.
Because that's just pavement markings, which we would more than likely piggyback on IDOT's contractor through a change order modification. The flashing yellow beacon could be as simple as a sign, the typical signs you would see with the intersection ahead with a flashing yellow beacon.
Solar.
Solar powered, which could be somewhere between $500 and $1,000. Or it could get as fancy as the ones up on Randall Road at Canville, where they're actually looped in and tied into the traffic signals, and those are.
I was wondering if you do something.
The more complicated you get, the price tag goes up. The problem that we would foresee with that, and we've spent a little bit of time trying to guesstimate that, is the Viaduct. You can't get a direct cable from where the flashing beacon would have to be to the traffic signal box because the Viaduct, Bridge and Buckmans go so deep underground. So probably the most logical thing would be do some sort of a wireless transceiver and bounce it off the Third Street parking deck and then do it on a wireless remote. But again, it gets expensive. So ideally, it would be, IDOT would just say, put in a flashing beacon, which we could put on possibly even on a timer during peak travel times, so it's not on 24/7 and keeping the residents up all night. But that would be the cheapest option.
And IDOT would have control over that 31 and 3rd if they were going to do the restriping and the narrowing?
Well.
Would they dictate that intersection?
Yes, they would.
Okay.
That's actually what this, this modified Phase 1 study does, is it gives them all the technical information, and then they'll go through, develop what their minimum comfort level would be.
Standards.
And then they'll, they'll advise staffers to help, and which will then advise the city council what the impact would be.
And I just had one more question. The bus stop, are there bus stops along that way? Because I couldn't remember if there was. 802, it said there was a bus that would travel from some place to Aurora.
I think it's down by the Campana Building, though, isn't it?
Is that the only one?
It's got to be down that end.
Okay. So. So it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't impact the.
And a lot of the other issues that were raised by the public at the meeting, such as refuse collection.
Yeah.
And brush collection, these are all things that we can handle from an operational perspective with the various contractors. And we've actually had some brief discussions with them, and they're more than willing to look at off-peak times to be in that area.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Alderman Simoniyan, then Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to give a little bit of a background, because it's been a little lengthy journey that we've taken on this. Back, I think in the late latter part of 2013, a constituent approached me regarding the City of Geneva Bike Way implementation plan of November 2005. And inside that plan, there is a recommendation on page 41 that a road diet be considered for Illinois Route 31 from, it has here, from Cheever to Fabian Parkway. And this bike plan was adopted by the city council back then, and we've obviously never approached, approached it. So when I was, when I got involved, I then involved my illustrious senior alderman to join to see what his thoughts were, and since he was, I think he authored part of this or was on the committee, we both thought it was at least an idea to pursue, and we got the mayor involved as well. And the constituent was willing, at his cost, to do the preliminary plans to see if it was even feasible. So at this point, there's, there's no cost to the city for any of these engineering pieces. So the constituent took it upon himself to, to find out if this is even, was even feasible. And then at that point, we decided that we needed to get the input of the neighbors. So we sent out 267 mailers to all the streets parallel and perpendicular to Route 31 that was going to be impacted. Those included Foxford, Forest View, Ray Street, Pac, North Pac, South Pac, Easton, Elizabeth, South Batavia, Fargo, up from 500 to 924, Harley Lane, Dunston, Hawthorne, Meadows, Sunset, and Dryden. And we, 21 of those 267 mailers were returned, 58 of them RSVP'd for a meeting on July 9th. I received 11 RSVPs for no, but with comments of the 11, 10 were positive in support of it, one was negative. I received 14 calls for the RSVPs with no's, but all 14 were in strong support. We met July 9th. In attendance was myself, Alderman Malardra, the mayor, and Mike Donahue from the county board. And we wanted to get a pulse as to whether this was worth pursuing. And between the responses we got from email, that meeting, we felt, we all felt it was in the best interest of the city to take at least the next step. And then we proceeded. We got support from the city council, and we, we needed to get into a modified Phase 1 engineering for IDOT, which was going to cost somewhere in the $30, $31,000 range, of which the constituents in, in the 5th Ward paid for that as well. So no taxpayer dollars were spent on, on the project up until now. The major focus was, quite honestly, at the beginning of this, was the bike path, was connecting the Fox River Trail. And it was one of those things that after the engineering study was done, it was found out that parts of this road are only 35 feet wide, which don't even support the state of Illinois's mandate of minimum 10-foot lanes for a four-lane road. So in my opinion, again, that's the lawyer speaking, in my opinion, the, we have a decision here that is beyond the bicycle part of the equation, is more of a safety issue and more of a liability issue. I think now that we are aware of the fact that we have 35-foot width roads, and that four lanes cannot adequately fit on 35 feet, we have a responsibility to support this, if nothing else, just for that reason, since it's just a restriping project and not a reconstruction project. And I think also, IDOT has a liability as well to look at this, because I believe that they bid this out at a, at the 40-foot or 44-foot amount. And I think this is, this is also going to be news to them as well. So I'm obviously in support of this. As a side note, Kane County connects their little newsletter, did a vote, which has no statistical validity, validity at all, but there was 247 people that, that chimed in. 56% they said they were in support of it, 41% said no, and 3% were undecided. But that's with them having no knowledge whatsoever of the details of the, of the project. So in my opinion, we have a responsibility, on a liability side of this equation, to support this effort just for safety in and of itself. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I attended the public meetings, and I generally get the sense it is pretty, pretty strong general support. There's obviously that some, some that don't, but the engineering study made it pretty clear, this is a, it's a dangerous roadway. And, you know, I think that, as Alderman Simoniyan pointed out, it kind of puts the onus on us now that we know of that, we've got that documented, we, it's probably kind of a no-brainer to move along, at least with the experiment, because it is, it is paint. But just, just to be clear, because I might have picked up something wrong from the packet. So the, the IDOT is really, their project starts at Elizabeth going south.
Correct.
So anything from Elizabeth up to Third is, is on us.
Anything north of Elizabeth, correct.
Right, yeah, and that could include the, the underpass. We know we really have very little to say with state roadways. The, the one thing that jumps out at me with this project, just going through machinations, is the sudden influx of cars at Third, and whether it makes sense to go right from Third Street to two lanes or have it merge on First Street. I presume traffic engineers like know the right solution, but I see problems with, with both of them. So if, if whatever we do at that intersection, whether we merge somewhere down First Street or whether we just merge into two lane, or connect two lanes at, at Third, if whatever gets chosen ends up being an issue in terms of traffic backing up on the Third or having a lot of car interaction on, on First Street, the fact that we don't have a lot of pull with IDOT, how, how easily can we rectify that striping issue if we want to go with the other merging option?
IDOT is going to pick one of the two options, is their preference.
Okay, so their engineers.
Their preference will become, will quickly become a mandate. The, I would say the consensus, I shouldn't say the consensus, that would imply that everybody was in agreement. But the support from the staff was to start the, to keep traffic in the two-lane configuration from Route 38 all the way into Third Street. And one of the primary reasons is that, is that the motorist has already been trained, so to speak, that there's two lanes of traffic. Otherwise, you create what would be called the accordion effect, where you would flare out the four lanes from basically the Viaduct going into Third Street, and then we'd have to bring everybody back in through another taper now, back into a two-lane cross-section. There's also the potential for some line of sight improvements as people are trying to exit out of the businesses south of the Viaduct, between the Viaduct and Third Street, because there would be more traffic leeway, because the, the motorist, the drivers, if they're following the pavement markings, are going to be further off the curb line.
Okay. The, thank you, that answers my question.
But that's just my personal preference, too.
Well, that's, you know, honestly, I don't have a preference on it, but I think in general, you know, I think it's, we've had four lanes for a lot of years, and nobody likes the road. If nothing else, it's a, it's a fine experiment. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Malardra?
Excuse me. From my perspective, this whole journey, as Alderman Simoniyan referred to it, has really been a series of tests. It's, it's a series of tests to see if the idea holds up. The idea of bike linkages fell apart pretty quickly, but springing out of that idea came the strong possibilities of safety improvements to a road that, as much as it's been the way it has been for a decade, is a pretty scary piece of, piece of road to drive on. So test, does the community support looking into this? Test passed. Test, does the engineering support a, a road diet? Test passed. Indeed, on that, on that topic or on that test, we have examples of similar road diets elsewhere in Illinois where they have proven to be quite successful. So, so it's, it's, it's not as if this idea sprang fully formed out of the mind of anybody. All we've ever tried to do is just keep advancing it, one step after another. I think we're at a point now where we have to realize that there is no perfect solution to this. Whatever we do, if we leave it the same, there are problems. These problems are enumerated in the study and the packet. If we change it, we're going to create interesting new potential problems, but we don't know if there are going to be problems. So you can take the devil you know in favor of the devil that you fear, but in this case, I think we have to recognize certain facts, and that the main fact is that this stretch of Route 31 is substandard for the roadway that we have. That can't be ignored. That is a fact. We've heard different people come up with different theories about, theories to explain the behavior that we see, but the behavior that we see remains. It's not a four-lane road, it's a two-lane road. The cars straddle both the white line, traveling north or south, they also straddle the double yellow line down the middle of the road. This is behavior that cannot be ignored, and, and the changes that we propose with the road diet seem to bring some sanity to a substandard stretch of roadway. And so I also support this for those reasons. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Kilburg.
A few questions. As I read through the materials, they talked about ponding on, on 31. No word standing water as being a hazard and maybe a contributing factor to some of the accidents that were reported over the last six years. Is the city intend to do anything as it relates to storm water to try to move water away from 31 so that, that we don't have that ponding effect when we have a two or three-inch rain all of a sudden? I think that if you look at 31, just north of Fargo, it's a very, it's fairly flat, and with the curb, I think what it does is it does tend to trap the water. And I'm wondering if, in fact, we have sufficient storm water movement there to, to help alleviate that problem.
The current study obviously does not account for any of the storm water improvements, and neither does staff. The stormwater system, the conveyance system on Route 31 is within the state right-of-way. It actually belongs to the state of Illinois for them to maintain. If we were going to undertake a capital improvement, that would not be funded by the state either, and that would be on the city's, up to the city's resources to fund a full-fledged drainage study for those structures, as well as conveyance, because once we, once we take ownership of the stormwater, it's ours to make sure that it's meeting all the current county and state and federal standards before it gets into the waterway. So at the present time, there are no significant improvements, other than some maintenance. We are looking, there are two structures that were identified by one of the residents, and I forgot which cross street there were, Brent. and I forgot which cross-street there were, Brent, do you remember which one? But the structures are so old, and...
The storm?
The, the two storm structures themselves, that we're afraid that once we start tearing into them, it'll be Pandora's box. That we can rebuild the structure, but then if the conveyance structure is compromised, and then we have to replace the conveyance structure, then we take it down to the next storm structure, we could start with a simple storm sewer repair and end up with putting in or replacing a significant length of, of storm sewer. It's been brought forward to IDOT's attention. IDOT is taking it under review, much like they're taking under review that the roadway itself is only 35 feet wide.
So, okay. So, you know, to expand on that, then, if we're saying if it's 35 feet wide and it's insufficient to handle four-lane traffic, are you saying, then, that the state of Illinois potentially could tell us, then, that we're gonna perpetuate an unsafe stretch of highway?
I can't speak for IDOT.
But I mean, is it possible that IDOT may have seen this themselves, as they looked closer at 31 and said, hey, this needs to go back to two lane?
I have not, I'm not aware of any correspondence from IDOT. I, I know that I was shocked professionally to find out that there was a significant stretch of roadway that was less than 35 feet wide, and almost 85% of that segment is less than 37 feet wide. So there's, there's a significant, it's, it's a substandard width, there's no doubt about that, and it does bring up the interesting point that, that has been brought up earlier, is that now that we're aware of it, do, are we obligated to act on it? And I think the same could be said of IDOT. Now that they're aware of it, are they obligated to act on it? What's the easiest, most elegant solution, which would be to restrict the movement of traffic down to two lanes? That, that's the, that's the simplest solution, rather than widening it and relocating all the various utilities.
I had a couple of other questions as well. As we look at the turn lane, at center turn lane, let's say, for instance, at Fargo... As, as you look at the turn lane, and maybe you're not in a position to answer that, is it legal for someone to, to switch lanes from the, the southbound lane, let's say, into the turn lane to pass a vehicle and then re-enter the...
That would be an illegal movement.
That would be a violation.
Seen it, but it's still illegal.
Okay. Okay. Also, as we look at the intersection at, at Fargo, if you have, let's say, three or four SUVs queuing to turn left onto Fargo off of 31 in the morning, what are we gonna do to improve the sightline to the south for those people that are trying to turn north off Fargo onto 31? I would think that you could create a blind spot there where people are going to hesitate to turn north because they aren't certain if there's traffic that's coming or not, because they can't see the lane because of the vehicles that are sitting to queue, that are queuing and are preparing to turn left. Let's say that if you had a, a large van, or a plumbing truck, or, or two or three SUVs, and you're sitting in a, in a subcompact, and you're looking to turn north, is that, is that something that could pose a potential hazard there? Because Fargo, in the morning, you've got a lot of vehicles, they're coming from the west, wanting to turn north, and I think that, I think of all, of all, I think the diet and all the work that's been done is fantastic. I just sort of see that as a potential problem.
So this would be, I just want to make sure I clear, I understand.
I'm coming from the south, I'm going to turn left on Fargo, and you have three or four SUVs there, and let's say you have a plumbing truck that's gonna obstruct view of that lane of northbound traffic.
This actually was one of the comments brought up by some of the residents on Fargo, that there are some line-of-sight issues on that corner of Fargo. That is something that we would have to look at through a code enforcement perspective, and Brent, do you remember that specific issue? I think it was shrubs and fence line?
Fence.
Yeah. Brent, if you'd like to comment, if you'd like to comment, Brent, we'd invite you to the podium, please, since there are a lot of folks, we haven't heard from you enough in the last three weeks, so. If you could just share with everyone your name and title and profession.
Brent Coulter.
Thank you.
I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Illinois, and hold a professional traffic operations engineer certification. That's a national thing, too, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the issue, it was raised at, at our public informational meetings, and it, it happens a lot of places, not just at Fargo and Route 31, where you have two lanes from a side street coming out to a more major street. So, and, and the issue is, as you described, that a right-turn vehicle may not be able to see around the adjacent vehicle that's turning left out of Fargo, as I think you're, you're stating.
Fargo turning north.
So it'd be northbound 31 making a western turn movement onto Fargo, and if you are on Fargo heading east, trying to make a north turn move, the people in the turn bay are gonna be blocking your view for the northbound through lane.
Yeah.
How do you safely enter that, that intersection if you've got a grandmother there at 75, and she's hesitant to go? All of a sudden, you could have four, five, six, seven cars that are getting impatient because nothing's happening.
Right. It, it, it's a, it's a problem that exists under either the existing condition or the road diet condition.
Well...
You could almost make the argument that it'll be safer, because now there's only one lane of northbound traffic that the motors would have to navigate, as opposed to two?
The, the, the dual-left turn lane that exists, the center turn lane, does help from a safety standpoint, especially with the left turns out as well as in. What, the other thing we could look at is staggering the stop bars in the respective lanes. Normally, the solution of this is to reconstruct one of the, the curb returns on the corner, so the right-turn vehicle, for example, can kind of flatten out and see around the vehicles that are waiting to make a left turn out. That's not part of the IDOT plan for this project. They're strictly resurfacing, they're only repairing curb that's broken or damaged, they're not redefining the curb line. So we could suggest staggering the stop bars to create a better sightline for the vehicles in the opposing lanes, if that makes any sense. I mean, that, that's a strategy that we've used in other, other locations, where we're fixed in terms of, of the curb nomination.
You would say, though, that that was probably one of the areas that probably poses the greatest safety risk, from what we're actually attempting to do here. I mean...
In terms of the road diet versus existing?
No, just as we move forward, if, in fact, the road diet is implemented...
Right.
This still becomes somewhat of a hazardous intersection. I wouldn't call it necessarily hazardous, but a precarious intersection to navigate.
Yeah, a lot of the, a lot of the delay characteristics that are experienced at Fargo right now are still gonna be experienced with the road diet. You still have to wait for a safe gap in traffic. The median left-turn lane provides a lot of forgiveness if you misjudge a gap in traffic. It's a safe haven, you know, if you will, as opposed to the, to the four-lane roadway that exists right now. And, and that, the fact that you have to cross fewer through lanes to make a left turn out is reflected in a, a slight increase in capacity for that left-turn movement. So with the road diet, and, and, and that's, that's empirically measured result, that's reflected in the capacity analysis that we go through. So all in all, there are some benefits to the road diet in addressing that situation you described, but I think beyond that, we can suggest some things with actual striping on the approach to Route 31, which could improve the sightlines, particularly for those outbound left turns at that point.
Is there anything that could be done with Fargo there? Because I know that people will crowd on the right and take a right on, a right turn there at that intersection to get onto 31 currently. Is there any striping that could be done on Fargo to, to more or less...
Yeah, you know, so a lot of times, if, if we have the room, we can reduce the width of the outbound lanes, you know, to 10 and 1/2 feet each, let's say. We don't need a real wide lane, all we need is a space to hold a vehicle that's traveling, you know, four or five miles an hour as they approach the stop bar to stop, and that provides more inbound room for a right turn, or even a left turn, you know, and to avoid that squeezing kind of maneuver I think you're talking about. So that also can be brought to IDOT's attention, that can be, you know, addressed as part of the resurfacing project, I think, pretty easily without anybody blinking an eye. So, yeah, that's something that, that we'll keep an eye on as, as this thing progresses, if it does through, through IDOT, so.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the dais? Anyone from the audience regarding, yes, we'll take our dear gentleman in the third row first? That's you.
I'll be back there if you need to.
You got it. Thank you very much, Mr. Babica.
Thank you.
And for our benefit and those watching at home and elsewhere, we just ask that you kindly share with us your name and your address.
Yeah, my name is Hans Hyman, and I live on South Batavia or Route 31, exactly with this intersection you talked about with Fargo. And there are several, several driveways which are serving for several houses. There are subdivisions which are having an outlet only for one driveway, right? And that enters. Now, if you have the road diet, the lengths of the cars which are coming in any direction are now piling up. Right now, you can have kind of two lanes which are kind of straddling along, so you have, if you're putting these two lines together, you take a car, and you take about four, five car lengths as a buffer. When somebody breaks, you are now lengthens the whole traffic line. And if you now get a little bit more, more slow-driving cars, when I have essentially, I was at the first meeting, which is always referred to, that there were 50 people, and they were all in favor, but this meeting was actually about a bicycle path. And the argument was, is there gonna be a bicycle path or not? And the bicycle path in this area was initiated by having a bicycle path along the river. The people on the river said, no, that's no good, we have to put it in the front yard of the people who facing Route 31. And now came the issue that we don't put this thing into the front yard, we put him on the road. So the whole issue was not the width of the street, it was a bicycle path. And I was very much against the bicycle path, because it was, would have been really dangerous. If you find the bicycle people in there, and you found a lot of people who said, yes, bicycles have rights, and they should be acknowledged. So now this thing became a political issue. You have people who voted, and they had bicycles, and they wanted to get this connection from the bicycle path along the park and going back to the city there. And now it becomes a safety issue. And I go with the article of Tri-City, and I don't know how accurate this thing is and how that corresponds to whatever you found out, but they said that you have, that you have 45, or 40, 40 accidents, mostly 34% were side swipes, and if you divide this per year, that is about 88 accidents per year. Now, if you want to save, bring the safety argument, you save eight accidents, of which 34% are side swipes, so you come down to, let's say, six accidents which you can really save, right? Naturally, they bring in that on a little place, you have turned over a car in the front yard. Now, that's a big deal, right? Now, how many times do you have accidents where people run into each other so that the car turns over? And this is a political issue. And I have now some questions, which was the idea about the constituents which approached the city about this idea with a bicycle path. And naturally, the bicycle people, great stuff, right? Nobody looked at safety, was only the bicycle path. I was the one who said, it's a safety issue. And nobody really came in, and they said, well, everybody is for it, right? Nowadays, bicycle path is dead. It's good, because I would have made the people who made the bicycle path on Route 31 personally liable for all the dead people they're gonna have on the road. And you will see that these people will suddenly go back and say, no, no, we don't want to be responsible for this stuff. I understand that, right? But now it's a safety issue, but I have a totally different issue. In order to, nobody here talked about this Fargo street, that this thing comes up a hill, the traffic going south. And you have, not only the streets, but you have the driveways. Out of our driveway, I have one second to make a decision, do I get out of the driveway or not? And when I want to turn left? If I go right, well, I can still see how the cars come in. Now you double the time, because the cars come now, one after the other, right? So instead of having 20 cars, you have now 40 cars. And these things are not even piling up. Now you have some old woman, and I don't go after the women, but you have somebody who is collecting garbage, who collecting brush. They block the whole traffic, right? So what people do, they pass this thing in the passing line, which is called turning line, right? And it immediately becomes a passing line, right? And when you have the argument about the Fargo and the sightline, the sightline is restricted by the hill, and these people are on the, pretty much the same height we are at, you have one second to make a decision. And now you have these cars, you have gaps between cars, right? So you go in and say, now is the time, right? And then you go. Well, there's another car coming, going south, right? So basically, we got used to, we only make north exits, right? Because you don't want to get into this going south, right? When I come back home, and I have a snowplow, I have to go around the block because I can only turn in our driveway going south. So if I come in from the city, I cannot get into my driveway with a plow. I have to go around, no, wait a minute, if I go north, I have to go around in order to get south, and then I can get in. And to effect, I have a car which is smashed twice because of this problem, right? Besides, if you have snow and slippery conditions, you have the hill, right? You get out of the driveway, and that is not only for me. There is a driveway right next to me which is at least two houses, right? We have one going south, there's a whole subdivision. Now it's a time, and that's the question I have to these people who are constituents. They came up with the idea of a road diet, because they didn't like the bicycles going into their subdivision. Naturally, if you have a drive, a bicycle path on Route 31, you don't have these problems anymore. As a matter of fact, we had the discussion when the bicycle path was in our front yard. And we got this thing stopped because we got a lawyer, and we said, you cannot do that, right? So the city decided to have signage about no bicycle on Route 31. This signage was never put into effect, and there are still bicycles going down, going south on Route 31, or on the, on the sidewalks. And the signage goes, if you come from the south, there is a no bicycle path along beyond the government center. So why, the bicycle problem and the constituent problem can be solved by putting proper signage. The speeding of the, of the road, as is now, could be done with enforcing this thing... The speeding of the, of the road, as is now, could be done with enforcing this thing or having the automatic radar which tells you you're going too fast. And you don't stop behavior or bad behavior by having a road diet. People still drive fast and if there's some nut who's driving speed limit, they pass them. And they take the turn line as a, as a passing line, and you already find out that this should be or is a violation, which police should be identifying. So you put a police car in there in order to find out bad behavior, which includes driving too fast, right? And what you have as an engineer, you have one basic rule, don't fix something which works. And this four-lane highway works. You have eight, or I'm going to take the side-swipes, but let's say six accidents which are minor per year. If you have this thing in a road diet, you're going to have more backups and accidents because people stop because they find somebody comes out of the driveway. And you have them all piled up. So what you get, especially when you have slippery conditions, you have the multiple car accidents. And that is something which should be considered. And not only what the constituents said or what you guys who are very familiar with everything, but you don't live there. And that was my argument by having it made political. You have the people invited, and you cited all the streets which you invited, but they were hardly anybody who lived on Batavia Avenue. You had all the side streets, and you have a set of people, you ask what they like or not. So who the hell gets this heck when you live on Elizabeth Street? You don't live on Batavia Avenue or Route 31. And if you take the Third Street merchants, if you have the people kind of who are coming from the south to go shopping, and they get into this dangerous road where they have no leeway, but they have to turn down or do out of their behavior, I would say you want to ask the people in Third Street, the owners, the business people, if they would like to have the traffic reduced from the south. And all these points, I think you guys who live somewhere else and have the great idea, the good feeling thing, let's have a road diet. Makes you feel good, right? You do something well, then we reduce the accidents, we make everybody happy and whatever. But you ask the wrong people. And that is something you politicians should know about. And that's why I'm here telling you that there's a different view to a road diet, which is a word which is reasonably complicated and not everybody really understands it, because dieting is good and road diets must be good, and you reduce the speed, and you have only no-lane lanes which are very close, and you talked about it, that you have an escape road. If something happens, you still can move into the lane, you don't have to do that, right? And here in this very article, it points out that there are people who hog the, the two lanes. So why is, what is this argument? Somebody drives in the middle of the road because there's nobody around. Suddenly, is that something bad? You should be driving in your lane, right? Because it's absurd. Right? I mean, the people who drive, they know it's a narrow road, big deal, but don't bring in this thing with authority. Put in a police car and you find out that people are driving slower and have lesser accidents. Okay, so I have enough, what I wanted to say, I left certain things out, but I think I took enough of your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Hans. Alderman Simoni?
Just for the record, Hans, I live on 31. And the gentleman, the gentleman who built my home was heading south on 31, pulling into his driveway, which is now my driveway, got broadsided and his wife got killed. So I, when you make statements that we don't live there, I live there. I was the one that spearheaded this with constituents who live on 31, so I don't want you to use some of the terminology that's used that we're politicians playing a political game. It is not a game for me. I live on that street too, and I take my life in my hands every time I pull out of my driveway. Okay? So I just want to go on the record that you're not the only one that lives there. Thank you.
No. As a matter of fact, I know that, okay? And I'm sorry that I misrepresented the people by excluding you, right? You are surely having had a very bad accident, a very bad experience, and I'm sorry, okay? That's all I can say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hans. Sir, front row? I believe you had your hand up, sir? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm William Kerfoot, I live on Woodward Avenue in Geneva, I've been here 43 years. And I'm not in favor of the road diet either. I'm a retired truck driver, 40 years' experience and probably a million and a half miles, mostly local. City of Chicago and probably 50-mile radius here most of the time. It just, I believe that it's going to lead to other types of accidents. People are not going to be satisfied going behind a truck, which I'm well familiar with, or other slow-moving vehicles. They are going to use the turn lane to pass. And it could lead to potential head-on collisions, which are a lot worse than side-swiping. It looks like it's probably going to pass, but if it is, I would like one thing added. I would like to see a provision in there where it would be revisited in a two- or three-year period to make sure that we've gone in the right direction. Because I really feel, either way, if they leave it alone or if they do the road diet, it's not an ideal situation. The only really ideal situation is if the state ever comes up with enough bucks to widen it, to get it up to standard. But I don't see that happening in my lifetime, anyway. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Bill. Good to see you. Just to clarify, on the off-chance people assume that whatever vote is cast this evening at this special committee, the whole meeting and the council meeting, let's say for argument's sake that the vote is supportive of the road diet, all we're voting on is to submit the plan for consideration by IDOT. IDOT could very well say, hey, thanks for all the work, no thanks. But action taken tonight is not the final action, that rests with our friends at the Illinois Department of Transportation. This is just authority to submit the documents requesting the possibility of a diet. So, just to clarify. Anyone else? A million and a half miles, Bill, over 40 years? Was that just back and forth on East State Street or was that just?
No, I was a route salesman for seven.
I know you.
Pop truck, and that, you don't put many miles on, spend more time with hand trucks.
On a pop truck?
Yes.
As in soda pop?
Yes.
You must be from the east, man, we call it. Are you from the east originally?
Fort Raisin, Teg.
We call it.
That's southeast for God's sake.
We call it pop, in the east they call it soda.
Soda, okay, got it, okay. Mr. Burns, welcome.
Hi. My name is Rob Burns, I live at 1612 Fairway Circle in Geneva. I'm very interested as a resident in these topics. I don't think you want to hear an hour of my thoughts on the road diet, so I'm not going to give it to you. What I'm here to talk about is my role, not as a resident, but as a commercial property owner down on Route 31. We own the 1950 and 2000 South Batavia Avenue campus, some of you might know it as the Waste Management Campus, or even the Belden Wire and Cable Campus, if you were here earlier. Nineteen acres of land, two large buildings for office space, you know, a lot of tenants, some big companies, some small companies, some that have done very well by Geneva like Roquette, who started with us. We have, we've had Houghton Mifflin, who is also our neighbor, we've had Nycor, maybe that's not such a good one, given some battles with Geneva and Nycor that I'm aware of. But we've had some big companies and many small companies, very successful as well. So I'm here speaking both on their behalf, because it's their cars that need to get in and out of our campus every day, at least Monday through Friday. And the road diet covers a wide length of road, the way it's being described now. I would like to suggest that north, the northern portion of the road diet is not at all like the south portion. I think you've heard enough tonight to get a feel for that, what it means on a local basis, having a driveway up on the northern portion. Tom, you've had bad experience at your location, I'm sorry to hear that. I attended the first meeting, several people talked about accidents that they've had and so forth, they're very real. The data talks about accidents that have taken place over the last five or six years, mostly Third Street and mostly Fargo. I see there's a left-hand turn lane on Fargo in the, what I reviewed this morning. That sounds like something that would be a good idea, notwithstanding some of Dean's concerns about visibility and so forth. And so there are trade-offs on all these situations. So the point I want to make is, I don't have the answers to all those issues. I think some of them are hard to say. There could be unforeseen consequences of otherwise well-thought-out, well-meaning change of the road diet. I'm here tonight not to talk about those, but to talk about the southern portion, okay? And it seems to me that it would make sense that if the northern portion is distinctly different in its orientation, roads, number of people, heavy residential, tight driveways, tight streets, I have driven up and down them a lot in the last two weeks, tried to turn into some of possibly your own driveways, to get in there, to see how hard it is to make a turn. It is tough, okay? It is very tough. To make a right-hand turn in there is very tough, let alone a left-hand turn into some of them. It's very difficult. So it's, it's, it's a dangerous situation, you should be careful getting in there, get your lights on and so forth, and maybe make a road diet change as well. But that's not true down the south end of that street. That's not true at all. In the data you saw, how many accidents did you see south of, you know, midway on that road that were listed? I saw none. Okay, I've owned this campus or been the leading owner of it, put a group together for 14 years. To my knowledge, we've never had a single accident down there. And I've checked with different people, Alderman, Craig, so forth, wasn't aware of any either. So my question is, why are we doing anything with the road diet down on the south end of that street? Why does it have to be done? I understand that from someone else, another neighbor who owns a commercial campus, that the original road diet, and I didn't know this, I was told this today, stopped halfway down the street, and at some point, it's now going all the way down the street, okay? I don't know why, I don't know the history of that. But it seems to me that we have four large commercial campuses down the right-hand side heading south, starting with Riverbank Labs, Houghton Mifflin, ourselves, and even though they're in Batavia, the Campana Building. Most people didn't know necessarily that that's Batavia, they think it's Geneva. So there's four large campuses. There are very few entries. Why do we need a left-hand turn lane going down the left, going down south on Route 31, when the only possible turn is to make a turn into the Forest Preserve? Very little traffic going in there during the week. You know, I, I live there. I'm, I'm coming in and out, that driveway is directly opposite our 2000 driveway. So I'd like to raise the possibility that the road diet might be a little misguided on the southern half or southern 60% of that road, it might not make any sense at all. And to pick up a comment that I think it was Hans said, the engineers say if it's already working, why would you change it? Well, to me, there's a certain element of truth with that in, in our area. Now, I did go to the first meeting, I've talked to Brent, both briefly at the end of it and on the phone, and, and to Rich, our public works director. And I was very pleased to find out, although I missed it at the meeting, that they had actually had a slide that dealt with some difficulties at Fabian Parkway, and those of you that have read your packets have seen that. So I thought I was asking a question about something they hadn't even thought of, which had to do with a couple of issues that we deal with. One was the backing up of cars from Fabian Parkway, primarily in rush hour in the evening at selected times, okay? And it does happen. And low and behold, on one of their slides, they had identified possible changes, possible mitigation would be needed down there, including making sure that doesn't happen, and maybe even adding, if we could get somebody to pay for it, eventually a right-hand turn lane at Fabian Parkway. So that more cars that turn right, and Brent tells me 30% of the cars that go out down there at night make a right-hand turn, an astonishing number, going out, maybe out toward Mill Creek. So the, the idea of having that lane added would, would take all those cars out of the way and allow two free lanes for cars to wait at the light. And the Fabian light is much longer than the 31 light, as it should be. I don't know if it's the right number, but it's approximately two minutes at a time. So it, there's a lot of time for cars to back up. So I was thrilled to see that they identified it, and as I understand what's in today's packet, and I'm sorry that things are moving, actually, I'm, I'm worried that things are moving so quickly with this, in order to not miss the money from the state to get the paving that we all want, we all want the paving, okay? That we might be hasty in making some decisions on the striping. And again, I'd like to direct my comments not to the northern portion, which is very complicated, but to the southern portion only. I'd hate to see us make some changes down there that are not necessary, okay? And it's not just paint. My understanding is that getting IDOT to change their mind, once they've done something, whether it's just paint or something else, it might be very difficult. So we might be making a change that they might, you might go back to them in two years and say, I don't think we should have done this, and they're going to say, ah, you know, I don't, I think we should just leave it alone for a while. People have gotten used to this configuration, we don't want to change it. So I think we should be careful before we make a change like that. So as I understand the latest change, it calls for moving, not starting the, it would still be one lane heading south, but it would turn into two lanes a little sooner than the original plan, okay? I can't tell, I heard someone mention that it might be around 1950, I've heard you say tonight.
Thanks for the two minutes before your traveling.
I would, not to take the time of everybody here, but it's important to me, I would like to talk with you privately to make sure I understand where you're talking about, because I don't understand where those lanes would be. But I'd like to throw out a more drastic solution, that you don't need, you don't need to do this anywhere near my property, it should be much farther up the street, completely. And we shouldn't even be talking about this. But if it does, if something does end up being done where you want to go one lane further south, in my view unnecessarily, then I do, I do need to make sure, on behalf of our tenants, who are good citizens here, we have some people that are good, good jobs for the city of Geneva, we want them to be here, we want to make sure that they can simply get in and out of that campus. And just so you know, it's primarily, we're talking rush hour, okay? So at night, we get a backup from Campana, which sometimes gets, is starting to get or is at our southern driveway. Any, any diminution of those two lanes that exist today is obviously going to make that worse. There's just fewer cars that can be stacked up there. So narrowing it down so it only starts at Campana, that would be terrible. Narrowing it down so it starts near my 2000 driveway, that's better, but it's no good. Narrowing it down so it's a little north of my 2000 driveway, maybe you could live with it, but hope to God there's never any more traffic down there? I question why we need it at all. Secondly, the, the northerly direction, you deal with getting out of there at night, primarily, okay? Just so you know, during the day, we do not need a left-hand turn lane into either of our driveways. I don't believe Houghton Mifflin does either. I have watched it, I have studied it. I spent an hour and a half there last week, watching all my tenants arrive, okay? Only two cars had to even stop to make a left-hand turn into our campus in the morning. In other words, there's very little north, north to south traffic driving down there that gets in their way. It'd be nice if there was a left-hand turn there, but, but would it be worth everything else that's being considered? I question it, okay? We don't need it. Going north, a couple people that are traffic types that I have bumped into in the last week are questioning whether we should be narrowing to one lane going north so quickly coming up from Fabian. Why? Why are we doing this? I, I don't fully understand it, but some professionals are saying, maybe you shouldn't be doing that. Maybe you shouldn't be doing that at all. So that's all I wanted to say, I wanted to bring attention to that southern corridor and suggest that things should be different. And, and. And someone who deals with city meetings more than I do suggested that one thing I could do was to ask each Alderman, and given the time that's taken place tonight already, I won't, but to ask each of you to tell me, if this doesn't work, what are you going to do about it? What are you going to do about it, Tom? What are you going to do about it in three years if there's a problem here? What can you do about it? You know, can we really change anything with IDOT once it, something has happened? And if we've got tenants there that can't get in and out of the property, that's not good for me, it's not good for them, it's not good for any of us, it's not good for the city. We want these people to be coming and bringing their business here. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time. If any questions about any of my specifics, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Mr. Kilburg, has this, has this change that you outlined, has that happened since last Thursday?
Mr. Babica, we're going to pull up the section of the packet that shows the revised, if you will, or most recent.
The one that we've seen, or the most recent one that we were forwarded, is that current, I guess?
We've pushed the taper further to the north. So basically, the taper that would direct traffic for northbound from two lane to the one lane would be to the north of the entrance to the 1950 address. Whereas if you're on southbound 31 approaching Fabian, you would be restricted to one lane of traffic. And then as you approach 1950, you would then start flaring out into a two-lane cross, two-lane configuration as you approach Fabian Parkway.
It's different than what's in our packet?
Correct. There's been some, some changes and some modifications. Primarily, actually, it was taken into the comments of Mr. Burns, and as well as looking to making sure that we had an appropriate amount of staging and queuing, not only for the protected left turn at Fargo, but as well as also for the left turn movements into and out of Forest View. There are minimum, it seems to be ironic that you're talking about minimum standards that we have to adhere to when you state highways, not that the minimum standards. But there are a certain amount of transitions for both the taper, as well as for the turn bays itself, that you have to allow for a certain amount of traffic to queue into.
Is that the one that you want?
Is that?
Is that the one that you want?
We want, Rich?
I think page 37.
Page 37?
37.
This is 114.
Oh, sorry. I've got it. Oh, I'm in the committee of the whole packet, 37 of 64. So just.
It should be the same. Keep going.
Well, the other slides you see inside here, there are like these, the larger packets.
By the way.
Ones that we saw at the open house.
This? This? Can you identify it in the city council packet, or no?
34 is what it looks like.
It's in the cow, see?
I'm in committee of the whole packet.
Okay.
That's the meeting we're in, right? Just checking. So now go to page 37, up at the top.
37.
Way up to the top.
There you go. There we go.
Want it smaller?
No, that's fine.
Like that? That?
Yeah.
Does that work?
This is too small.
Too small?
This is actually, has been modified. So what we've actually done is, you basically see the entrance of the Campana Drive building? See where the W O is starting to?
Rich, forgive me for requiring you to use the microphone, sorry about that. Unless you want to use the handheld.
Kind of started getting into my talk show host. I don't think we have a pointer mouse up here. We just have the old-fashioned.
The pointer, you have to do it on the screen so that people at home can see what you're pointing at.
You used to have that red pointer.
Yeah. Okay. This is where the original design was. And it has since been modified because after talking with Mr. Burns about his issues at 1950 and looking at what our possibilities were, in order to get this information out into the packet, there were some, this was one of the items that we looked at closely and changed. And what has basically happened is that this, here's the Campana Building. We've pushed this further up to the 1950 building to begin somewhere right around in this area, if you can kind of see the arrow moving back and forth. And so the taper now is beginning here, so you have two full lanes going northbound. The taper begins, starts directing traffic for the two northbound lanes and a one northbound lane. And then as you're having southbound traffic, you're in one lane, you get to this point, and now it starts to flare out to two lanes. And what this is going to do is add more staging and queuing for Fabian traffic here, as well as getting traffic through the Fabian Parkway before it starts to flare back into two lanes. And one of the reasons why we looked at this is that here at Fargo, you've got the dedicated protected left turn that you see here. And here at Forest View, you've also got the left turn here, protected left turn. And we need to make sure that there's adequate stacking at here and at Fargo, and that this taper here meets the IDOT thresholds for stacking appropriate amount of vehicles during the peak movement times, as well as having a non-drasastic taper back and forth. So looking at this, and Brent, if you want to come up here and talk about this again, what we basically did was we pushed this about as far back as we could to allow for the access in and out of the 1950 building without having the dual, of southbound lanes blocking the entrance in and out of their facility.
So, I think, Rob, it's the 2000, your southern drive, the drive just north of?
I want to make sure we're talking on the right.
That's the 2000.
2000 is a southerly, 1950 is the north.
Right. The original plans that you're looking at, the full two lanes going south on 31 started south of that driveway. So a single lane went past your 2000 drive. Based on your comments and some additional analysis, we were able to push the full two lanes pretty much to the 2000 driveway point. So at that point, we have two full lanes southbound, and then the taper to one lane, from one lane southbound to two southbound, starts somewhere maybe halfway up towards the 1950 drive.
Somewhere in this area.
Right. So if we want to maintain a three-lane cross-section from north of Campana that covers the Fabian Parkway entrance, the Fabian Forest Preserve entrance, that's what we need to do. That would be the constraint. If we don't want to provide a left turn lane for Fabian Forest Preserve, it's possible that we could start the taper even further north than the 2000 drive. Maybe even as far north as the 1950 drive, which is the northernmost drive that you see on this aerial. And then start our transition to a three-lane section. So basically, let's say from 1950 south, we'd have a full four lanes, the same widths, more or less, that we have right now. No exclusive left turn lane, or bidirectional lane for any of the driveways in that vicinity, including the Forest Preserve. But we'd be able to start our three-lane section from 1950 going north. Our queuing and stacking analysis shows that, under existing conditions, we're going to accommodate most of the southbound queues that occur during the PMP hour, which is a critical heavy movement hour in that section of 31, with this change that we've, that I've just described at the going with two lanes, starting from the 2000 drive south towards Fabian Parkway. If we look ahead to 2040, and we look at the intersection of Fabian and Route 31, that's kind of the elephant in the room, that's going to drive everything. If nothing is done to Fabian and Route 31, and the county does recommend adding lanes on Fabian Parkway, a southbound right turn lane can be considered with that same future improvement. There's no programming yet for it, there's nothing obligated for any improvement at this time. But if that were to happen, then we're still fine. If that doesn't happen, and we look out 10 or 15 years down the road, then we may start to see some queues backing up beyond the 2000 drive into a single lane under the plan that we have right now.
But it's also very important to keep stressing that the city of Geneva has absolutely no jurisdiction whatsoever on this intersection. That is a city of Batavia, a King County, and an IDOT cross to bear. There's nothing we can do here other than share our, the data and the analysis of this report with City of Batavia, with IDOT, and with KDOT, and let them come to their own conclusions.
Alderman Brown, Alderman Simoni.
I understand that the submission we're voting on tonight to submit to IDOT gives them a suggestion of two possibilities at the Third Street intersection. It seems to me you should also include two possibilities here. One with a taper that starts where you're currently talking about, and then a suggestion that if Ness, if in their opinion it should be further north, we see no reason why it could not go somewhat further north. Because indeed, it is true, there are only businesses and a forest preserve until you get all the way up to the Fabian House. So that could be an alternate you suggest. In the end, is it possible that they would change, if they accepted the striping, that they would decide on some modifications on what you've suggested?
Absolutely. They could send comments back to, back to myself and to some kind, and to Brent, and ask for further revisions or alternatives.
So it's possible that they will decide, in that you've moved it somewhat north, they will decide to move it even further north for reasons they may have.
Or south.
Or south. So this is just a submission of, basically what we're submitting is the materials that we've discovered with the help of our consultants, and the suggestion, if the vote is positive, that the city council is in favor of this, and please consider it, IDOT. That's basically what our submission is.
Phase one basically is a proof-of-concept study. There really isn't even any, in a typical three-part construction process, phase one is basically proof of concept, will the improvements actually work, are they feasible, and are they practical? And that's really what the first two points of my cover memo outline is that.
Then I suggest adding this option on the, as well as the option at Third Street, to specifically put in a paragraph describing the option on this end, that there are differences of opinion as to where the taper should start.
That would be relatively easy to do, and it's still relatively cheap.
Thank you.
Alderman Simoni.
Thank you, Mayor. Brent, if we take the, if we take the Forest Preserve entrance out of the equation, how far north can you start the taper?
I think we might be able to go right about to the 1950.
Is 1950, is 1950 pass all the commercial?
No, there would be one other driveway to the north of that, that would be, well, a couple of others, but the big one would be.
Houghton Mifflin?
There's Houghton Mifflin.
Can we get north of Houghton Mifflin?
Then we may start to run into issues with our Forest View, but it may be possible.
Because I think, I mean, I mean, originally, when we looked at this way back when, the Forest Preserve entrance, we were talking about with a bike pass, was the entrance, was their maintenance entrance originally, way back, way back when. And I agree with Mr. Burns that the commercial side of this equation should remain intact as much as possible, and start this as far north as we can, because it is two different, you know, I understand where you're coming from, to try and include that Forest Preserve entrance, but I don't think that's the critical part of this equation. I think it's more important on the commercial side than it is on the Forest Preserve side.
We've just heard from, from a business owner out there that they're not concerned about the left turn lane. If that view is actually shared by the businesses up and down that section of roadway, that's the other advantage of the road diet, is we do create that median left turn lane. But I think, yeah, I mean, we can, we can investigate a starting point for the actual beginning of the road diet, working up from Fabian. That would, that would encompass more of the commercial section, but still allow us to transition back into the road diet section before we get to.
Forest View, yes, I agree.
So that becomes kind of the critical.
Because our issue, correct me if I'm wrong, our issue with the width of the road is not down south of Houghton Mifflin and south. Our issue of the 35-foot widths actually begin at almost the Forest View area and head north, correct?
The severe narrowing occurs in more of the middle section. It's not as much on the, although there are some narrow spots on the south end.
Yeah.
But yes, I think that's a fair saving.
So I mean, I would, my recommendation to the council would be that we move this, tapering is far north to give the commercial, leave the commercial part of this equation If in fact, you know, Houghton Mifflin is, if that's what they would like, or we could taper, I mean, if they want that left turn lane, we include them. But if they don't, that we try and move us north of Houghton Mifflin, and then to start tapering it into the.
It would be an easy option, as long as the cross-section supports the four lanes traffic. If we start going into substandard widths again, that's still something we're probably going to have to identify to IDOT and give them, they are going to have the final say in this, not us.
Correct.
And they may determine, make the determination that, they're going to have to be the ones to make the determination what they can live with for lane widths. And if they say they can live with a nine-foot or nine-and-a-half-foot lane width instead of a 10-foot lane width, then we can push the taper north if they're still concerned about it, or.
If that document, if that documentation that we submit to IDOT is supported by the commercial part of this equation, it's just, it at least shows IDOT that, that the commercial side wants it to remain as it is.
Correct. And that is one of the things that the, that IDOT looks at very strongly in the phase one report, is the public comments, not only of the property owners, the individuals that live on that road segment, but as long as including the business, the community as a whole, which is the key pact of getting the resolution adopted if we move forward, and then the actual commuters itself, because that is still a state highway, so technically anybody within the state of Illinois has a legal right to make a statement on that, on this project.
So I don't know.
From Mr. Burns, and we also heard, we have an email from a representative of Houghton Mifflin.
Okay.
Which did express the same general concern, which is, you know, traffic backing up from Fabian onto a single lane. And I think that's the way our report reads. Right now, it reads, if we want to maintain the three-lane road diet section all the way south through the Fabian Forest Preserve and the 2000 drive, the southern drive that we've been discussing, this is where our back of queue is going to fall now and then in the future. And I think the implication is, if you're concerned about the ability to stack vehicles and store them on a two-lane section going southbound, then we can change the limits of the road diet section.
I mean, it seems to me that the reason we're going that far south is because of the Fabian Forest Preserve entrance, correct? If that wasn't there?
Primarily, yeah.
We would have, so I, in my opinion, I would recommend to the council that we move this north to accommodate the commercial side of this equation, and obviously satisfy any safety engineering tapering issues, so we can taper before we get to, you know, to Forest View. And then have the three lanes going from, you know, just south of Forest View, heading north.
Would, would it be the?
Unless Houghton Mifflin comes back and says, but if Houghton Mifflin's saying the same thing Mr. Burns is saying, then, I mean, we would like their support in this effort.
Would the city council prefer to still see options, or is the consensus just to push it as far north as possible?
I have, I do have an amendment language for, I think, folks to consider. And as we all know, I believe, and this is a fair statement, that IDOT's waiting for us to either recommend or not recommend.
Correct.
So good, better, and different time is of the essence. My recommendation would be that someone offer amendment to, amendment to the plan. It'll be decided by professional staff and consultants, that the plan be amended to reflect the tapering. that the plan be amended to reflect the tapering both north and southbound to begin no further south than the most northerly commercial entrance, which is Houghton Mifflin.
Riverside.
Yeah, there's actually, there's still...
Ruben Lampitoy, excuse me, yeah. I mean, translation is, forgive me, who cares about the Forest Preserve entrance? Primarily what we're saying.
Yeah.
I mean, Mr. Burns has stated in public that, except for the weekends, there's not a lot of traffic going in there. And I witnessed that as well, so, but that's really what we're saying, I guess. Is that a fair amendment language, or?
Yeah, yes.
Can you give that...
Can I offer that as a friendly amendment, Mr. Babica? Do you want that as a separate amendment or friendly amendment?
I serve at the will and pleasure of the city council and the mayor.
That's a friendly amendment, everyone understands that?
Yes.
You okay with it? The motioner was Mr. Marx?
I'm fine with it.
The second is Mr. Simoni?
Yes, I'm fine with it.
So amended, okay.
Can do.
Mr. Burns, or any comments on the alchemy that just took place?
No, that sounds, that should work.
We are going to connect the roadway though through Eagle Brook right next to your house. Hans, yes, sir. And then Mr. Kerfoot, if you have any comments as well.
Yeah, my name is Hans Heiman. And by moving the merging further north, I would like the engineering consultants to consider the effect of crowding further north because you just move the problems further north.
I think that's a...
And I think that should be considered. And maybe the committee should have another presentation with all the changes and with the study of the crowding, which has now moved further north. And I think there's no reason to have this crowding going on already down at Fabian Parkway, but to move it up further. But the problem is that they're still crowding and that should be studied by the people who have the authority to study it.
Mr. Coulter, may I ask a question based on Hans's comments? Does it stand to reason that if the allotment for tapering is greater, the crowding becomes reduced?
And to use his terms, the crowding is reduced. The more we move the four-lane section north, the more room we have to store southbound vehicles on a red light at Fabian. And so it doesn't create a problem, it relieves a problem. And that was the emphasis in our report that, you know, we're concerned about stacking. This is what we can do if we want to provide a left-turn lane that serves Fabian. That's as much stacking as we can provide.
And if I'm heading...
The more north we go, the less crowding we get and the better operationally it's going to be for these commercial driveways.
And if I'm heading northbound on thirty-one, I have greater opportunity to merge as opposed to less opportunity, obviously.
Yes.
And we're not talking hillside strangling, we're talking...
After time, once you know, after leaving the Fabian intersection, that you're going to be merging anyway.
Right, right.
You're going to start to gradually get over. It's going to actually help that transition northbound also.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Kilburg.
I guess I would ask the question, and I think what you normally have is the earlier you can merge those two lanes, the more calming effect it has on that single lane then, doesn't it? So I'm just saying, are we pushing this then north to where the merge is actually going to take place, maybe a hundred, a couple hundred yards south of Fabian to where people are trying to merge? Somebody's accelerating, somebody's trying to change lanes and trying to get into the single lane. In other words, is that going to create some additional static at the approach to Fargo as a result of it by pushing this further north?
No, I don't think so. I think our merge is still going to start well south of Forest View, which is...
What is the distance from Forest View to Fargo then? What would that be in?
I'm not sure offhand, but...
Less than a couple hundred yards, isn't it?
No, I don't know. But we're going, our transition will start south of Forest View. And it will end well south of Forest View because we have the need to provide some left-turn storage there. Another interesting fact is if you're coming north on Route thirty-one at Fabian, we talked about the southbound right turns. Half the traffic on thirty-one south of Fabian is turning right. So they're in that right lane, they're already south of Fabian, waiting to turn right onto Fabian. And, you know, the fact that we have one or two lanes going north from that point really is not that material. The vehicles are going to be in that inner lane, moving north. And I think, in effect, creating that kind of...
I guess my question is, is the merge going to be completed sufficient, insufficient with a sufficient distance to where you don't have people accelerating or decelerating or you have drivers that are distracted, looking to their right to see, okay, is this guy going to try to get in front of me? Or is he going to merge behind me? And it would create a situation where they may be less attentive to somebody that's entering the roadway off of Fargo. I'm just, you know, I don't know. I can't answer that question, but I'm just saying...
As far as Fargo...
My experience, when you have a merge like that, the car in the right lane usually accelerates or decelerates and then they're trying to find an opportunity to merge. And that sometimes that car that's in the lead will accelerate to create space, if you understand what I'm saying.
Our three-lane section will start well south of Fargo.
Okay.
It will start south of Forest View.
So you're saying the traffic should be settled by the time that it gets anywhere close to Fargo?
It will absolutely be settled by the time we get to Fargo. It'll be settled by the time we get to Forest View.
Somewhere in this area right here.
Right.
Because you have to make the left-hand turn lane for the...
Why don't you go further north there? Let's see the distance between, okay, we're...
Here's Forest View.
That's Forest View. There's Forest View, then what's the distance to Fargo?
Oh, there's Ray Street in there.
Well, unfortunately, the slide splits it, so I have to cycle back down.
Go to the next one.
Well, here's Fargo down here.
Go south, drop, pull it up.
I go back up, now you can see Forest View.
Yeah, okay. Okay, where, could you show the relationship between Forest and...
No, he doesn't have...
If you go to page twenty-six, you can see the whole corridor.
There's Ray Street in between Fargo and, it's two blocks, two long blocks.
It'd be about six or seven hundred, six or seven hundred feet from where we actually have the transition south of Forest View before we get to Fargo. So there's absolutely, in my professional opinion, absolutely no concern with that regarding...
It doesn't look that great there, though.
Calming effect.
Between Forest View Drive and Fargo. My guess would be that it'd be less than a couple hundred yards.
If you see the Campana Drive on the very, on the west side, the circular driveway on thirty-one, the distance from that driveway to Fabian is roughly three hundred feet.
A hundred yards, okay.
And so we translate that up into this area.
Probably a little bit further, maybe about four hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah.
Fifty feet?
So by the time we transition south of Forest View, we'll have probably seven to eight hundred feet of three-lane section.
Again, with your mouse, show me again where the merge will actually be completed.
Move up a little bit, Rich, maybe right in there.
Okay. So we're looking at about maybe three hundred yards from that point to Fargo?
Seven, eight, eight fifty, you know, somewhere in that range.
Nine hundred feet.
We can have a detailed slide added to the packet for next Monday, which will show the approximate location of where, well, not show the approximate, but show where...
Well, Mr. Babica, just for clarification, this matter is going to be discussed and voted on at tonight's council meeting. So I believe that the vote tonight would give latitude to you and Mr. Coulter to prepare the final slide based on the amendment that was approved and the direction given, that it would reflect the tapering as far north as possible in order to accommodate, as Mr. Simoni had stated, safeguards, et cetera. Unless this council or committee believes that we can return with a special committee of the whole again next weekend council.
Well, as long as the city council is allowing to give us that discretion of preparing a slide and getting out to them as soon as it's ready through a direct email.
And we can post that, of course, on the road diet section of our homepage as well.
Revised detail, correct.
Exactly. Alderman Kilburg, anything else? Mr. Bruno?
Yeah, just to rehash this. So basically, the point of this discussion was to move the merge as far north as possible, but before Forest View. As long as the merge was completed before Forest View would be, the road diet would be in effect there. That would protect the cyclists crossing at the access road. But that said, IDOT will say, well, based on the road bed, we can only take it so far. But as long as we can make sure that that road diet extends at least through Forest View, I'm good with it.
Alderman Simoni.
Just one last thing. If we were, if you take Third Street heading north on thirty-one, all the way through St. Charles, all the way through South Elgin, as far north as you want to go, we're sitting here making a decision to say, if we added ten feet to that road and put a center turning lane, we'd all get excited about it. And all we're doing is extending that road with an additional turning lane in the middle, some, whatever, mile, mile and a half, or whatever it is. So it's not like we are coming, and the traffic from north of Third Street on thirty-one going through the city of St. Charles all the way north is pretty substantial. And they deal with brush pickup, garbage trucks, everything else without the center turning lane. So, you know, if we did it that, if we did it that way, I think we would all support something like that. So that's all we're doing is really, instead of taking one away, it's just extending the existing road and making it better. That's all I look at it.
Anyone else from the dais? Anyone else from the audience? We're prepared to take a vote? Just to clarify, Route thirty-one will be much like the upper and lower Whacker Drive?
Sounds good to me.
Sounds good to you.
Can we stack it like that?
Everyone, please shield your eyes. I'm going to turn on the light again. There we go. Everyone understands the motion?
Yes.
A roll call vote would be in order. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Rig Meladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simoni?
Aye.
The motion passes with nine affirmative votes. No objections and one absent. That concludes our business for the committee of the whole. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Simoni and seconded by Singer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will immediately hop to unless anyone needs refill coffee or what have you, which I do, for the city council meeting. The clerk needs to change the tapes, so I'll turn off the microphone in the interim.